The session is now called to order. Please rise for the singing of the national anthem. Everybody is requested to remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to call the roll.
Any objection? There being no objection, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to call the rolls of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abaya. Abayon. Abiliyanoza. Abu. Abueg. Atcharon. Akop. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adjong. Advingula. Agarau. Agabau. Aglipay Bilyar. Albano. Alkala. Alihano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angara Castillo. Antonino. Antonio. Aquinamagseisai. Aragones. Arbison. Arcillas. Arenas. Atsensa. Aumentado. Bagau. Bagaching. Bagilat. Banal. Barbers. Barsaga. Batawil. Batukabe. Bautista Bandigan. Belaro. Belmonte Feliciano. Belmonte Jose Christopher. Belmonte Ricardo. Vinites. Bernos. Bertis. Biazon. Biliones. Biron. Bulilia. Bundok. Bordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Maravida. Brosas. Bulut Big Tang. Kagas. Calderon. Calixturbiano. Caminero. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Casa Franz. Casa Pedenil. Katamco. Caetano. Celeste. Cerapica. Siriles. Chavez. Chipeco. Ko. Coanco. Juliantes. Cortez. Cortuna. Cosalan. Crisologo. Kuwa. Juarezma. Cueva. Dalipe. Datol. Dasa. Jesus. De Venesia. De Vera. Defensor. Del Mar. Del Rosario. De Los Montalia. Nimaporodula. Nimaporokalid. Duavit. Durano. Di. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Regel. Hermita Boain. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrella. Isébio. Evardone. Fariñas. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Feriol. Floirendo. Flores. Fortun. Fortuno. Fentebelia. Garbin. García Guendolin. García Uc. García Albano. Gary Richard. Gary Charon. Gassetaya. Gachalian. Heron. Guana Cristina. Gomart. Gómez. Gonzaga. González Alexandria. González Sarreledong. González Fernando. Goreseta. Gulyas. Hernández. Herrera Di. Hofer. Alusos. Javier. Ko. Conghun. Labadlabad. Lacson. Lagman. Lanete. Laugan. Lasatin. Lechón. Li. Limcaichong. Lobrigat. López Benjur. López Carlo. López Manuel. Loyola. Makapagalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Mangodatatus Huarto. Mangodatatus Ajit. Marcoleta. Marcos. Mariño. Marquez. Martínez. Matugas. Millana. Mending. Mendoza. Mercado. Mirasol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nogralis Jerico. Nogralis Carlo. Nolasco. Núñez Malañaón. Wominal. Ocampo. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vini. Pacquiao. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panganiban. Panotes. Papandayan. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Primicia Sagabás. Kimbo. Radasa. Ramiresato. Ramos. Relampagos. Ribilla. Ropapuno. Robes. Rocamora. Rodríguez Isidro. Rodríguez Máximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romualdo. Roqueari. Roque Ruelio. Sactalan. Sagarbaria. Sahali. Salceda. Salimbangan. Salon. Salo. Sambar. Sandoval. Santos Repto. Sarmiento César. Sarmiento Edgar. Sabiliyano. Semah. Xiao. Silverio. Singson. Suansing Estrelita. Suansing Rasyo. Suárez. Sielbarado. Tambunting. Tan Angelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Sherni. Tejada. Teves. Chanco. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Trenyas. Tugna. Tupas. Ti. Umali. Unavia. Ungab. Uniko. Ui Juliet. Ui Rolando. Ui Beretta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Villarde. Villasco. Villasco Catera. Veloso. Vergara. Villaperte. Villanueva. Villerasa Suárez. Villarica. Villarin. Villago. Yap Arthur. Yap Milexio. Yap Victor. Yu. Somor Marcarmen. Somor Ronaldo. Sarate. Subiri. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 214 members responded to the call.
With 214 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to defer the approval of your journal.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bills and resolution on first reading.
Reference of Business, Bills on First Reading, House Bill 6636. Institutionalizing Student Fair Discount, Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 6637 prohibiting speeding in public nationwide, Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6638 prohibiting the construction of mall sports center, convention center, expedition center within a three kilometer radius from the exit and entrance of an expressway, Representative González Sarreledong.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 6639 lowering the compulsory and optional retirement age of public school teachers, Representative Villaperte.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 6640 providing scholarship grants, Representative Villaperte.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 6641 establishing the energy virtual one-stop shop, Representative Villaperte.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 6642 institutionalizing energy efficiency and conservation, Representative Villaperte.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 6643 mandating the appointment of at least one barangay health worker in every barangay, Representative Tan Angelina.
To the Committee on Local Government.
Resolutions, House Resolution 1435, direct the Committee on Transportation to inquire in the toll hikes of the NLEX.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1436 expressing the warm and profound congratulations of the House of the City of Baguio, Representative Gomart.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Solution 1437. Commending and conferring the Congressional Medal of Distinction to Miss Teresita Sen Wynn Wynn Laxamana Marques, Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1438 commending and conferring the Congressional Medal of Distinction to Miss Karen Santos Ibasco, Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1439 commending Ireland Soto, Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1440 congratulating, commending the AFP, the PNP, and all those who are in way one way or another helping the liberation of Marawi, Representative Batawil.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
Communications, letter dated September 22 of Catalino Escuy, OIC, DILG.
To the Committee on Appropriation.
2016 Annual Report of the NEDA, Representative.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
Letter dated September 25 of Michael G. Aguinaldo, Chair Personkova.
To the Committee on Appropriation.
Letter dated September 26, 2017 of Maria Gleda Ilim, Kova.
To the Committee on Appropriation.
2016 Annual Audit Report of the Optimal Media Board, Optical Media Board.
To the Committee on Information.
Letter dated October 3 of Roland A. Ray, Regional Director, Kova.
To the Committee on Appropriation.
2016 Annual Audit Report of the DILG.
To the Committee on Local Government.
2016 Annual Audit Report of the BAR.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
AAR on the Cebu Normal University.
To the Committee on Appropriation.
Annual Audit Report on the University of Southern Philippines.
To the Committee on Appropriation.
Letter dated October 18, 19, and 20 of Roger Edino, Deputy Director, BSP.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Annual Audit Reports on various water districts.
To the Committee on Appropriation. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up bills on third reading.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up the approval on third reading of House Bill Number 4863 and for this purpose, please direct our Secretary General to read the title of this measure and call the roll for the nominal vote.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill on third reading 6425 and call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 4863, An Act Strengthening the Philippine National Police Criminal Investigation and Detection Group by Restoring its Authority to Issue subpoena and add testificandum or subpoena ducis tecum, amending for the purpose Section 35B4 of Republic Act Number 6975, otherwise known as the Department of Interior and Local Government Act of 1990. Roll call of members, consideration of House Bill Number 4863. Abaya. Abayon. Abiliyanoza. Abu. Abueg. Atcharon. Akop. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adjong. Advingula. Agarau. Agabau. Aglipay Bilyar. Albano. Alkala. Alihano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angara Castillo. Antonino. Antonio. Aquinamagseisai. Aragones. Arbison. Arcillas. Arenas. Atsensa. Aumentado. Bagau. Bagaching. Bagilat. Banal. Barbers. Barsaga. Batawil. Batukabe. Bautista Bandigan. Belaro. Belmonte Feliciano. Belmonte Jose Christopher. Belmonte Ricardo. Vinites. Bernos. Bertis. Biazon. Biliones. Biron. Bulilia. Bundok. Bordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Maravida. Brosas. Bulut Big Tang. Kagas. Calderon. Calixturbiano. Caminero. Campos. Kanama. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Casa Franz. Casa Pedenil. Katamco. Caetano. Celeste. Cerapica. Siriles. Chavez. Chipeco. Ko. Coanco. Juliantes. Cortez. Cortuna. Cosalan. Crisologo. Kuwa. Juarezma. Cueva. Dalipe. Datol. Dasa. Jesus. De Venesia. De Vera. Defensor. Del Mar. Del Rosario. De Los Montalia. Nimaporodula. Nimaporokalid. Duavit. Durano. Di. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Regel. Hermita Boain. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrella. Isébio. Evardone. Fariñas. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Feriol. Floirendo. Flores. Fortun. Fortuno. Fentebelia. Garbin. García Guendolin. García Uc. García Albano. Gary Richard. Gary Charon. Gassetaya. Gachalian. Heron. Guana Cristina. Gomart. Gómez. Gonzaga. González Alexandria. González Fernando. Goreseta. Gulyas. Hernández. Herrera Di. Hofer. Alusos. Javier. Ko. Conghun. Labadlabad. Lacson. Lagman. Lanete. Laugan. Lasatin. Lechón. Li. Limcaichong. Lobrigat. López Benjur. López Carlo. López Manuel. Loyola. Makapagalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Mangodatatus Huarto. Mangodatatus Ajit. Marcoleta. Marcos. Mariño. Marquez. Martínez. Matugas. Millana. Mending. Mendoza. Mercado. Mirasol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nogralis Jerico. Nogralis Carlo. Nolasco. Núñez Malañaón. Wominal. Ocampo. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vini. Pacquiao. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panganiban. Panotes. Papandayan. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Primicia Sagabás. Kimbo. Radasa. Ramiresato. Ramos. Relampagos. Ribilla. Ropapuno. Robes. Rocamora. Rodríguez Isidro. Rodríguez Máximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romualdo. Roqueari. Roque Ruelio. Sactalan. Sagarbaria. Sahali. Salceda. Salimbangan. Salo. Salon. Sambar. Sandoval. Santos Repto. Sarmiento César. Sarmiento Edgar. Sabiliyano. Semah. Xiao. Silverio. Singson. Suansing Estrelita. Suansing Rasyo. Suárez. Sielbarado. Tambunting. Tan Angelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Sherni. Tejada. Teves. Chanco. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Trenyas. Tugna. Tupas. Ti. Umali. Unavia. Ungab. Uniko. Ui Juliet. Ui Rolando. Ui Beretta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Villarde. Villasco. Villasco Catera. Veloso. Vergara. Villaperte. Villanueva. Villerasa Suárez. Villarica. Villarin. Villago. Yap Arthur. Yap Milexio. Yap Victor. Yu. Somor Marcarmen. Somor Ronaldo. Sarate. Subiri.
With 193 affirmative votes, seven negative votes, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 6425 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 6550. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 6573 and call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 6550, An Act Instituting the Magna Carta of Daycare Workers Providing Funds Therefore. Roll call of members, consideration of House Bill Number 6550. Abaya. Abayon. Abiliyanoza. Abu. Abueg. Atcharon. Akop. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adjong. Advingula. Agarau. Agabau. Aglipay Bilyar. Albano. Alkala. Alihano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angara Castillo. Antonino. Antonio. Aquinamagseisai. Aragones. Arbison. Arcillas. Arenas. Atsensa. Aumentado. Bagau. Bagaching. Bagilat. Banal. Barbers. Barsaga. Batawil. Batukabe. Bautista Bandigan. Belaro. Belmonte. Feliciano. Belmonte Jose Christopher. Belmonte Ricardo. Vinites. Bernos. Bertis. Biazon. Biliones. Biron. Bulilia. Bundok. Bordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Maravida. Brosas. Bulut Big Tang. Kagas. Calderon. Calixturbiano. Caminero. Campos. Kanama. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Casa Franz. Casa Pedenil. Katamco. Caetano. Celeste. Cerapica. Siriles. Chavez. Chipeco. Ko. Coanco. Juliantes. Cortez. Cortuna. Cosalan. Crisologo. Kuwa. Juarezma. Cueva. Dalipe. Datol. Dasa. Jesus. De Venesia. De Vera. Defensor. Del Mar. Del Rosario. De Los Montalia. Nimaporodula. Nimaporokalid. Duavit. Durano. Di. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Regel. Hermita Boain. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrella. Isébio. Evardone. Fariñas. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Feriol. Floirendo. Flores. Fortun. Fortuno. Fentebelia. Garbin. García Guendolin. García Uc. García Albano. Gary Richard. Gary Charon. Gassetaya. Gachalian. Heron. Guana Cristina. Gomart. Gómez. Gonzaga. González Alexandria. González Sarreledong. González Fernando. Goreseta. Gulyas. Hernández. Herrera Di. Hofer. Alusos. Javier. Ko. Conghun. Labadlabad. Lacson. Lagman. Lanete. Laugan. Lasatin. Lechón. Li. Limcaichong. Lobrigat. López Benjur. López Carlo. López Manuel. Loyola. Makapagalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Mangodatatus Huarto. Mangodatatus Ajit. Marcoleta. Marcos. Mariño. Marquez. Martínez. Matugas. Millana. Mending. Mendoza. Mercado. Mirasol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nogralis Jerico. Nogralis Carlo. Nolasco. Núñez Malañaón. Wominal. Ocampo. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vini. Pacquiao. Paduano. Palma. Pancho.[1618.52] Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Ribeilia, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque Harry, Roque Roelho, Sactalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabiliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Sielvarado, Tammutting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shiny, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Unico, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Villa Puerta, Villa Nueva, Villa Rasa Suarez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villa Gó, Yap Arthur, Yap Mileso, Yap Victor, Yu, Samor Marc Carmen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred five affirmative votes, no negative vote and no abstention, House Bill Number 6550 is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 6557. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 6557 and call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 6557, An Act Promoting Open Access and Data Transmission, Providing Additional Powers to the National Telecommunications Commission. Roll Call of Members, consideration of House Bill Number 6557. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abweg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Atjong, Atvinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinamagseisai, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsienza, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Eusecristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulut Bektang, Kagas, Calderon, Calix Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casa Franz, Casa Pedrinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Cerápica, Ciriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Co, Cohuango, Coliantes, Cortez, Fortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarestma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Deus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalla, Nimopo Odulla, Nimopo Kalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, El Lago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Ermita Boain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferreguliat, Ferreluis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Gary Richard, Gary Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Arreledong, Gonzalez Fernando, Gorseta, Gulias, Hernandez, Herrera, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Co, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaichong, Lubrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatatus Huarto, Mangodatatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jeriko, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malañaon, Waminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Ribeilia, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque Harry, Roque Roelho, Sactalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabiliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Sielvarado, Tammutting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shiny, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Unico, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Villa Puerta, Villa Nueva, Villa Rasa Suarez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villa Gó, Yap Arthur, Yap Mileso, Yap Victor, Yu, Samor Marc Carmen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
Um, Mr. Speaker, I am voting no, Mr. Speaker, and I reserve my right to submit a written explanation of my vote.
Mr. Speaker. What's the pleasure of Congressman Sarte?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I'm voting no, and I reserve my right to submit a written explanation of my vote.
Are you filing a motion?
We are still on voting, Mr. Speaker, so I register my no vote with the reservation to submit a written explanation. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
In so far as your reservation to submit a written explanation of your vote, are you filing a motion? Because by mere manifestation, the Chair cannot approve it.
Mr. Speaker, may the floor leader be allowed to make the motion in behalf of the gentleman, Mr. Speaker.
Proceed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we give the gentleman the opportunity to file a written explanation on his vote on the just-approved measure, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
With two hundred four affirmative votes, seven negative votes, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 6557 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 6558. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 65... Five... 6558, and call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 6558, An Act Strengthening the Powers of the National Telecommunications Commission, Amending for the Purpose Public Act Number 7925, otherwise known as the Public Telecommunications Public Policy Act. Roll Call of Members, consideration of House Bill Number 6558. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abweg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Atjong, Atvinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinamagseisai, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsienza, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Eusecristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulut Bektang, Kagas, Calderon, Calix Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casa Franz, Casa Pedrinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Cerápica, Ciriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Co, Cohuango, Coliantes, Cortez, Fortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarestma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Deus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalla, Nimopo Odulla, Nimopo Kalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, El Lago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Ermita Boain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferreguliat, Ferreluis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Gary Richard, Gary Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Arreledong, Gonzalez Fernando, Gorseta, Gulias, Hernandez, Herrera, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Co, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaichong, Lubrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatatus Huarto, Mangodatatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jeriko, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malañaon, Waminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Ribeilia, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque Harry, Roque Roelho, Sactalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabiliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Sielvarado, Tammutting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shiny, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Unico, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Villa Puerta, Villa Nueva, Villa Rasa Suarez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villa Gó, Yap Arthur, Yap Mileso, Yap Victor, Yu, Samor Marc Carmen, Samor Ros, Ronaldo, Sarate.
Um, Mr. Speaker, I'm voting no. And may I move that I be given the privilege to submit a written explanation, Mr. Speaker.
Will the gentleman file the appropriate motion?
May I move that I be given the privilege to submit a written explanation, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
With two hundred seven affirmative votes, seven negative votes, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 6558 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 6570. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 6570 and to call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 6572, An Act Institutionalizing the Philippine Qualifications Framework, Establishing the Philippine PQF National Coordinating Council. Roll Call of Members, consideration of House Bill Number 6572. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abweg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Atjong, Atvinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinamagseisai, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsienza, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Eusecristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulut Bektang, Kagas, Calderon, Calix Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casa Franz, Casa Pedrinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Cerápica, Ciriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Co, Cohuango, Coliantes, Cortez, Fortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarestma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Deus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalla, Nimopo Odulla, Nimopo Kalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, El Lago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Ermita Boain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferreguliat, Ferreluis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Gary Richard, Gary Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Arreledong, Gonzalez Fernando, Gorseta, Gulias, Hernandez, Herrera, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Co, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaichong, Lubrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatatus Huarto, Mangodatatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jeriko, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malañaon, Waminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Ribeilia, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque Harry, Roque Roelho, Sactalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Santos Rekto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Savillano, Semah, Xiau, Silverio, Singson, Swansig Estelita, Swansig Buraso, Suarez, Sielvarado, Tanbunting, Tanangelina, Tanmilagrosa, Tansheni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Di, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilarde, Bilasco, Bilaskoatera, Veloso, Vergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villerasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Yu Lago, Yap Arthur, Yap Mileso, Yap Victor, Yu, Samoras Marc Carmen, Samoras Ronaldo, Sarate.
Subiri. With two hundred and eleven affirmative votes, seven negative votes, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 6572 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 159. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 159 and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 159, An Act Strengthening the Right of Government to Expropriate Lands for Socialized Housing, Amending for the purpose, Sections 9, 10, and 11 of Republic Act Number 7279, otherwise known as the Urban Development and Housing Act of 1992. Roll call of members, consideration House Bill Number 159. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abweg, Acharon, Akop, Akosta, Akosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Almar, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akinamagseisai, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Mandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Belixano, Belmonte Jose Cristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Biktang, Kagas, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casafranz, Casapedil, Katampo, Kaitano, Celeste, Cerápica, Seriles, Chávez, Chepeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Collyantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Tosalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus, Devenesha, Devera, Defensor del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osamontalia, Dimopor Abdulla, Dimopor Kalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Rigel, Hermitabohain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Gary Richard, Gary Sharon, Gasataya, Gachelyan, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goreseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Ko, Congjun, Labat Labat, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lesatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limgay Chong, Lubrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Magpakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato Suarto, Magudadato Sahid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Milliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jericho, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malinyon, Wominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Padwano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Pimissias Agabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Rova Puno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roquejari, Roquejoelio, Saktalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Santos Rekto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Savillano, Semah, Xiau, Silverio, Singson, Swansig Estelita, Swansig Buraso, Suarez, Sielvarado, Tanbunting, Tanangelina, Tanmilagrosa, Tansheni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Di, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilarde, Bilasco, Bilaskoatera, Veloso, Vergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villerasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Yu Lago, Yap Arthur, Yap Mileso, Yap Victor, Yu, Samoras Marc Carmen, Samoras Ronaldo, Sarate.
Subiri. With two hundred and twenty affirmative votes, zero abstention, zero negative vote, House Bill Number 159 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that copies of the bills that were passed on third reading be transmitted to the Senate.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to acknowledge the visitor of Congressman Ruel Pacquiao. May I therefore acknowledge Mayor Victor Salarda of the Municipal of Alabel Sarangani.
The guest of Congressman Pacquiao is hereby requested to rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, I would also like to acknowledge the presence of the visitors of Honorable Greg Gasataya, Mr. Boy Duran, Glacial Masculino, Dali Yassa, Elsie Julingan, Gemlo Victosa, Crisi Similiano, Erwin Nikavera, Sheila Gilera, Eugene Adjong, Boy Shokon, May Maranyon, and Archie Alipalo.
The guest of Congressman Gasataya is hereby requested to rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill Numbers 1616.
Any objection?
I would like to defer that motion, Mr. Speaker. First, I would like to take up.
Proceed, Majority Leader.
Before we proceed to that earlier motion, Mr. Speaker, I would like to move with leave of the House and for a purpose of perfecting amendments, that we reconsider the approval on second reading of House Bill Number 1616, entitled "An Act Exempting the System Loss Charge Component in the Sale of Electricity by Distribution Companies and Electric Cooperatives from the Coverage of the Value Added Tax", amending for the purpose Section 109 of the National Internal Revenue Code, as amended by Republic Act Number 9337 and Republic Act Number 10378 and for other purposes. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
To sponsor the measure, Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the distinguished Chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means, the Honorable Dakila Kuwa.
The Honorable Dakila Kuwa is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, to propose individual amendments. First, on page one, lines five, six, and seven, delete the phrase, open quotation. Number one, subject to the provisions of subsection two hereof, the following transactions shall be exempt from the value-added tax, close quote, and in lieu thereof, insert the following, open quote, "The following shall be exempt from the value-added tax", close quote. Mr. Speaker, may we know if this is acceptable to the sponsor?
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Your Honor.
The sponsor accepts the amendment?
I therefore move, Mr. Speaker, that we approve said amendment.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Second, Mr. Speaker, on the same page, line 11, we delete, open quote, letter B, triple X, and close quote. May we know if this is acceptable to the sponsor?
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the amendment as stated.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
And third, on the same page, line 13, we delete, no open quote, triple X, close quote. May we know if this is acceptable to the sponsor?
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
I therefore move, Mr. Speaker, that we approve such amendment as stated.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
On the same page also, line 15, we delete, open quote, letter U, and triple X, close quote. May we know if this is acceptable to the sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Mr. Speaker.
I therefore move, Mr. Speaker, that we approve said amendment as stated.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Fifth, Mr. Speaker, on the same page, line 17, we delete letter V, and in lieu thereof, insert the following, which is letter W. May we know if this is acceptable to the sponsor?
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I therefore move that we approve such amendment as stated.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Sixth, Mr. Speaker, on page two, we delete lines one to nine, and in lieu thereof, insert the following. This is in open quote, in brackets, and in parentheses, the capital letter W, and then we, this is proceed, followed by, in, in, enclosed in parentheses, a capital letter X, and after that, um, triple X in small letters, and enclosed in brackets, a semicolon, and followed by a period, close quote. May we know if this is acceptable to the sponsor?
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendments, Mr. Speaker.
I therefore move, Mr. Speaker, to approve the amendment as stated.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
And seventh, Mr. Speaker, and this is the last, on page one, amend the title to read as follows, open quote, "An Act Exempting the, exempting the system loss charge component in the sale of electricity by distribution companies and electric cooperatives from the coverage of the value-added tax", amending for the purpose Section 109 of the National Internal Revenue Code of 1987, as amended, close quote, Mr. Speaker. May we know if this is acceptable to the sponsor?
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Mr. Speaker.
I therefore move, Mr. Speaker, that we approve this amendment as stated.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed to the approval on second reading, may we include as additional co-authors to... So with that, Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 1616 as amended.
Those who are in favor of House Bill Number 1616 as amended, say aye. Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Speaker, House Bill Number 1616 is hereby approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill Numbers 1616 and 4113, as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules. I so move.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the distinguished gentleman from the Second District of Magintanaw, the Honorable Sahid Magudadatu, on a matter of personal and collective privilege.
The distinguished gentleman from Magintanaw, Congressman Magudadatu is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Assalamualaikum warakmatullahi wabarakaatu. May your happiness to my esteemed colleagues in the 17th Congress. Before I begin, Mr. Speaker, you may allow me to, uh, to all the families and the relatives of the, uh, Magintanaw massacre to please stand up for their recognition. Thank you very much. May your happiness, Mr. Speaker, og labina sa atong presidente, Nasa Rodrigo Rovadoterte, hinautunta, gamaabot ang ako ang mainit kapag tamiaw kanimo. Labina karod na ako kauban ang mga pariente sa biktima sa Magintanaw massacre gapangayaw og kalooi og tabang kanimo. Una po sa lahat, Mr. Speaker, pasinta bilang po sa lahat ng manunood ng aking PowerPoint presentation, medyo masayalan po ang mga larawan na aming ipapakita. Mr. Speaker, I rise today in the name of the people of Magintanaw to speak about the topic that is only not personal to me and my family, my constituents, but also the Mediamen and the Filipino people. Eight years ago, on November 23, 2009, the most tragic and horrific event in the town of Ampatuan Province of Magintanaw happened when fifty-eight innocent lives were brutally taken to prevent the filing of the candidacy of my brother, Smile Toto Magudadatu. And among those who were heartlessly killed were our lawyers, supporters, my sisters and sister-in-law, female cousin, and the twenty-two Mediam practitioner. And six of those who were killed were innocent passersby trailing the national highway on their way to Cotabato City to work and for a doctor's appointment. They were just unlucky to be mistakenly identified as a part of a convoy. These victims were flagged down and escorted to a hilltop opening where police and gunmen loyal to the local warlord are accused of summarily executing them. Mr. Speaker, kami ng kapatid kong si Brian Jong Magudadatu, na dating mayor ng Buluan Magintanaw, ang unang pumunta sa gravesite noong ikadalawampat apat ng Nobrepre noong 2009. Upanganapi ng katawan ng mga biktima, lalo na ang aming mga kaanak. Doon namin, naramdaman ang pigati at sakit ng nakita namin ang karumaldumal na sinapit ng mga biktima, at hindi ko po lubos maisip, Mr. Speaker, ang kriming ito ay kayang gawin ng taong maayos ang pag-iisip. Hindi ko rin po lubos maisip, Mr. Speaker, na may mga tao pang susuporta sa pagtago ng karumaldumal na kriming ito. In fact, may mga taong presa at the crime scene na nililihis kami kung saan nililibing ang mga biktima at kanilang mga sasakyan. Ang mga tao sa likod ani nga, massacre tried to hide the dead bodies and their bastardy acts by using backhoes and digging graves. The international crisis group regarded the Magintanaw massacre as one of the worst acts of the political violence in modern Philippine history and the largest number of journalist's claim on a single day ever anywhere in the world. But first, let me highlight that present Magintanaw has gone far from what it was after the Magintanaw massacre. Democracy started to exist, kahit sino po pwede na pong sumali na walang takot na maging kandidato sa eleksyon as long as qualified under the Omnibus Selection Code. Alam ko ang ramdam ng aking mga kababayan ang malaking pagbabago ito. It is now a better and more progressive Magintanaw. I say this with so much pride and confidence that gun are the days when Magintanaw was labeled as the election cheating capital of our country. You will no longer see people walking around with guns and other weapons except law enforcers. Such impunity was the norm during the time when the Ampatuan were the helm of the, uh, government in Magintanaw. Mr. Speaker, gusto ko lang pong linawin na hindi ko nilalahat ang mga Ampatuan, kasi alam ko rin po at meron akong mga kaibigan kakilala na mga Ampatuan na maayos din at mabubuti po. After the massacre and after Toto Magudadatu was peacefully elected as the governor of Magintanaw, discipline, peace, and democracy were restored. Today, I stand here not only as a victim but also as representative from the Second District of Magintanaw to ask and urge everyone to support us in our cry for justice for the lives lost on that ill-fated day. Sa totoo lang po, Mr. Speaker, bibigyan ko kayo ng counting history. Before the massacre happened, marami na pong nakikiusap at nananakot sa amin na huwag na pong tumakbo bilang... na huwag na pong tumakbo bilang gobernador ng probinsya ng Maguindanaw, si Toto Magudadato. May nakipagbargay pa sa kanya na bibigyan daw siya na mataas na posisyon noong administrasyong yaon. Subalit, Mr. Speaker, hindi po kami nagpapatinag sa aming pamilya dahil gusto po namin mabago ang sistema ng pamamalakad ng gobyerno sa aming probinsya. Dahil sa konflik na yun, ay pinatawag kami sa malakanyang ang mga Magudadato family, pati na rin ang Ampatuan family ng dating presidente po ng ating bansa na ngayon ay isang kongresista sa ikalawang distrito ng Pampanga. Ang tinutukoy ko po ay walang iba si Congresswoman Gloria Macapagal Arroyo. Sinubukan po ni Congresswoman Gloria Macapagal Arroyo nung siya pa po ay presidente, na ayusin ang gusto ng dalawang pamilya. Ngunit ang nari parin ang di dapat mangyari noong November twenty-three, two thousand nine. Hanggang ngayon, hindi natin maiwasan na kilabutan at lubusang malungkot sa tuwing mahalala ang mga pangyayari. Subalit, sa ating bansang may demokrasya, sa ating sistema ang legal, hindi po sapat ang kilabutan at malungkot tuwing mahalala ang Maguindanaw massacre. Years after the horrific event, fathers, mothers, or fans of the victims, Maguindanawans and the entire Philippines are still painfully crying and yearning for justice. Eight years have passed, but justice remains elusive. The trial of the filed case against the perpetrators and their cohorts persists to drag on a very slow pace. There are even stories of irregularities in the handling of the cases that are aimed and delaying the progress of the case and placing serious doubts on the integrity of the procedures. In two thousand fifteen, an issue of bribery against the government prosecution panel handling the Maguindanaw massacre case was all over the news. There was an information that the lead government prosecutor, former Undersecretary Francisco Barrahdito of the Department of Justice, received a huge amount of money from the Ampatuan's. At dahil dyan, ay napilitan na magsampa ng kaso sa ambuzman ang mga kamag-anak po namin dito sa biktima against kay Yusek Barrahdito. Ilang araw matapos pa sampanan ang kaso sa ambuzman si Yusek Barrahdito. A case against myself, my family and our lawyers was filed by a certain person named Jeremy Hoson for serious illegal detention. Makikita sa television interviews ni Hoson na nakikipagmeeting siya kay Undersecretary Barrahdito and she wildly claimed that we detained her for purposes of influencing and forcing her to stand as a witness against the Ampatuan's. This case against us, Mr. Speaker, however, was later dismissed for being a great falsehood. Meanwhile, in court, Judge Joseline Solistreyas of Branch Two-Two-One of the Quezon City RTC continues to hear testimonies of witnesses and several accused were allowed to post bail. Isana dito si Sanjed Ampatuan, who posted bail in the amount of eleven point six million. Sanjed Ampatuan ran for mayor of Saripagwak, Maguindanaw, in the May two thousand sixteen election, but he was lost. The clear efforts to delay the case and silence new witnesses abound. Last November eighteen, two thousand fifteen, Denex Sackel was killed in an ambush while Sukarno Boots Saudagal was wounded. On December ten, two thousand fifteen, former Natus Salibo Mayor Ahmad Ampatuan, a nephew of former Governor Andal Ampatuan Senior and his two companions were wounded in an ambush. Denex, Boots, and Ahmad are witnesses who will testify against the Ampatuan's. Last June twenty-three, two thousand seventeen, Judge Reyes has dismissed multiple charges against the three suspects coming Ingo, Dexon Saptula, and Abbas Anungan for lack of evidence. Judge Reyes acquitted them of fifty-eight counts of murder and ordered their immediate release from detention in Kapagungdiwa in Taguig City. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, the Ampatuan Maguindanaw massacre case seems to be going nowhere. The accused and respondents in the cases relating to it seem to be getting their way in our legal system. Some of the relatives of the journalists who perished have died without seeing justice being served. Nancy de la Cruz, mother of journalist Gina de la Cruz, died alone in her house on September eighth, two thousand sixteen. Mario Kadagdagon, father of slain photojournalist Depon Kadagdagon, died in illness in October two thousand thirteen. Kadagdagon's wish was to see through the case and witness the actual conviction of the accused. His wish has been buried with him in the grave. Femi Momai, wife of journalist Ronaldo Momai, died of colon cancer in June two thousand fifteen. Jeter Montano, eldest son of Mariel Montano, is now a certified public accountant. NUJP scholars Roy Perante, son of Ronnie Perante, and June Colleen Maravilla, daughter of Ernesto Maravilla, finished criminology. Furthermore, Mr. Speaker, Salama Musa, daughter of Maryam Musa, finished a course in information technology. And also my niece, Ayasadiar, daughter of my late sister Eden, is now a Department of Tourism ARMM secretary. Mr. Speaker, you see, years have passed. A lot of things happened in the lives of the families of the victims, yet the wheels of justice is moving at a very slow pace. We have already heard lots of promises for its early and swift resolution. In an interview with Chief Justice Sereno, said that the handling of the case is already being expedited at the maximum. She added, Mr. Speaker, that the High Court already directed Judge Joseline Solistreyas to focus on the case. A former Justice Secretary Lila de Lima has also said that she remains confident that there will be some convictions made before June two thousand sixteen or before the end of the administration of the Akinia Administration. Ngunit hanggang ngayon, ay wala paring conviction na nangyayari. In fact, Amnesty International expressed disappointment that two consecutive administrations have failed to provide effective and swift justice for the victims and their families with the trial marked by delays. Noong November noong two thousand fifteen, based sa testimonial ng mga matatapang at matatapat na witnesses, na sampahan ng kaso sa DOJ, ang fifty pang katao na kasama din sa pagpaplano, pagsasagawa, at pagtatago ng krimen. Pero hanggang ngayon, Mr. Speaker, wala paring resulta. But we are not losing hope. Naniniwala parin kami na meron pang matulad at makakamit ang hustisya. Pero sana, bilisana po. Lalo na ngayon, ang pangulo natin ay walang iba kung di si Presidente Rodrigo Rova Duterte. Alam po nating lahat, alam ng buong mundo na si Presidento Duterte ay galit sa krimen, galit sa korapsyon, at galit sa droga. Sana ay mabigyan niya ng pansin ng kasong ito at tumulong na tuluyang paghatol sa mga mayakda ng Ampatuan Maguindanaw massacre. Mr. President, pareho tang taga Maguindanaw. Kami sa akong mga egsoon, sa Dabo na mini Dako, sa Dabo mini Eskwela, og nakahuman sa among mga piniling kurso. Kabuluko nga na kasabud ka sa tinuwag na sitwasyon. Mr. President, og kabulupod ko na aware ka sa mga kinaiyaaning mga tauhanan. Di lilimot sa imo ang mga violations na gibuhat nila sa dakbayan sa Dabo. There was this incident that a certain Banarin Ampatuan allegedly killed the grandson of the former Dabo City treasurer. Banarin remained at large until now and another Ampatuan figured in a sloppy incident and Ampatuan managed to enter high-powered firearms in Dabo City. Mr. Speaker, andyan na ang mga ebidensya. Malihin na kung sino ang mga masterminds at mayakda ng krimen. Pwede nga iconsider itong isang kaso na sinasabing the thing speaks for itself. Ngunit hanggang ngayon, ay wala paring natulan. Pinagpayan sa pa po ang isa. On October eleven, two thousand sixteen, President Rodrigo Rova Duterte signed Administrative Order Number One, creating a presidential task force, a super body that will look into media killings in the country. The super body would also investigate the Maguindanaw massacre and other previous cases of violence perpetrated against members of the media. This is the development that gives us so much hope for the future. Sana po, ito na 'yung sagot sa aming dalangin na may bigyan ng hustisya sa lalong madaling panahon ang mga biktima at kaanak na Maguindanaw massacre. Masaya na rin po kami, Mr. Speaker, kahit papano that recently Judge Joseline Solistreyas upheld his earlier decision to reject bail for Andal Ampatuan Junior. We rejoice one at a time victory. A memorial with the names of the victims now stand in Maguindanaw to remember the fifty-eight people who lost their lives in Maguindanaw massacre. I have also filed a bill, Mr. Speaker, that will make November twenty-three of every year as a national day of mourning. But I have the highlight that commemorating the lives lost on that fateful day should not enough. Justice must be served. Those who masterminded the massacre, those who executed the plans, those who tried to conceal the crime, and those who aided in the implementation of the plans must be convicted and sentenced. I am not blaming anyone for a stale pace of case, Mr. Speaker. It is my heart desire na sana po hindi natin makalimutan ang kaso. I am asking everybody to cooperate or find ways to resolve this case with dispatch. At higit sa lahat, humingi ako ng tulong para sa pag-alaga ng mga witness na nakataya ang kanilang mga buhay at pamilya sa panganin. And before I end, Mr. Speaker, hayan niyo po ako magpasalamat sa mga taong tumulong sa amin during the most difficult times of our life. Dagang salamat sa akong gigagaw si Congressman Swarto Tang Magudadato, who was then the governor of Sultan Kudarat. Di li na mo makalimta na ikaw mismo ni Kooyog Samorge habang ginautopsy ang mga patay ng lawas. Wala ni mong gibaan ang patay ng lawas ni Gina Lynn Magudadato. Insan dagang salamat sa imong tabang. Pati na rin sa walang umpay na guidance and wisdom na patuloy na binibigay ng aming Kyohin na si Pax Magudadato, who is the current governor of the Sultan Kudarat at iba pa naming mga pinsan, maraming salamat sa inyo. I am taking this opportunity to tell everyone how grateful I am to you. Salamat din kay Congressman Butch Pitsay for not refusing to extend help sa panahon na ginalokit pa namo ang gravesite. Hantod karoon padayo ng inyong kuninyang kasud sa akong egsoon na si Jong. Di li na mo makalimta ng imong tabang sa among pamilya. Mga media practitioners, local man or national media organization, FFJ, PCIJ, NUJP, CMFR, na walang umpay at walang sawang nagbabantay at nakabalita sa progreso ng kaso. Huwag po kayo mag-sawa. To all the members of the panel of prosecutors and private prosecutors, I commend you for your passion and dedication. Attorney Rachel Pastores from the Public Interest Law Center, Attorney Pete Principi, Attorney Michael Melia of National Press Club, former congressman, now presidential spokesperson, Attorney Harry Roque, and Congressman Carlos Sarate, and Attorney Nina Santos, the lead counsel of the private prosecutor, at sa mga mamamayang Pilipino, please accept my heartfelt gratitude. Maraming salamat po, Judge Joseline Solistreyas, together with your staff, the entire Branch Two-Two-One RTC, Quezon City. Sa inyong walang sawang pagchatsaga at matapat na pagganap sa inyong tungkulin, umaasa po kami sa ating pagtulong-tulong. Sana po, ay bumilis na ang pagconvict sa mga may sala. Salamat po sa mga sundalo at police, our forces of the Philippines and Philippine National Police on that time from Region Twelve, led by retired General Felisissimo Co. From the Task Force Johnson, retired Lieutenant General Ramondo Ding Ferrer, Administrator of the Marsalo in Maguindanaw sa panahong yaon. Mga police ng ARMM na disangkot sa kaso. Maraming salamat po sa inyong sikuridad. Sa mga witness na nag-alay ng kanilang buhay at kalyaan na kung hindi dahil sa inyo malamag, hindi uusad ang kaso. Salamat sa inyong katapatan at katapangan. Nagpapasalamat din po ako sa aking kaibigan na si Jay Duresa at kanyang ama na si OPAP Secretary Jess Duresa. We met on the night of November twenty-one, Mr. Speaker, two thousand nine. Dahil lumigi ako ng tulong at advise kay Secretary Duresa tungkol sa sitwasyon namin sa Maguindanaw. Ang advice po sa akin ni Secretary Duresa, dog, sabi niya, mag-ingat na lang kayo kay Andal Ampatuan Senior dahil ibadaw ang takbu ng utak nito. Maraming salamat din kay Chief PNP Ronald, kay Chief PNP, Director General Ronald Batu de la Rosa, na sa panahong yaon ay siya, ay nakapupromota siya ng Police Senior Superintendent, pati na rin sa aking kaibigan na si Tata Sala, na ngayon ay sangkunsyal na Munisipinay Santa Cruz, Double Del Sur. The three of us had a meeting together with other PNP and AFP officials somewhere in Dabo City on the night of November twenty-two, two thousand nine, because I was asking na sana maging neutral lang ang mga sundalo at mga police. Pero, Mr. Speaker, pagkatinabukasan, nangyari na 'yung Maguindanaw massacre. Maraming salamat din po kay Secretary Vitaliano Agiri for accommodating the relatives of the victims yesterday in a meeting. Nang dahil po doon, nabuhayan po ng loob ang mga relatives. Thank you rin po sa ating speaker na si Pantalon Admarest for gracing us with your time. Thank you for accommodating at your office and the relatives of the victims of the Maguindanaw massacre. Salamat din po sa ating Majority Leader. Kanina, salamat, sir, sa pag-accommodate mo sa amin. At alam ko po na hindi rin po ninyo makalimutan itong araw ng November twenty-three dahil may masalimot din na pangyayari po sa inyo, sa buhay po. Sa atong presidente Rodrigo Rova Duterte, na nga mayor, mayor pa katungnihagig ni ngay tabo ang Maguindanaw massacre. He is the mayor of Dabo City noon. Dawa tagi kan sa among kasing-kasing ang among dakong pasalamat, Mr. President. Di li na mo malimta ang imong tabang og malasakit sa panon sa among kaguhol. Mabuhay po tayong lahat, mabuhay Maguindanaw, mabuhay ang bansang Pilipinas. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Mr. Speaker, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Carlos Sarate.
Representative Carlos Sarate is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the gentleman from Maguindanaw accommodate some further questions from this representation?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Congressman from the Department, Honorable Congressman Sarate.
Maraming salamat po, Goodong Speaker, at sa ating kagalangalang na kaibigan na kinatawan ng ikalawang distrito ng Maguindanaw. Mr. Speaker, po ay tuloy na nakikiramay at sumasama sa ating kaibigan at ang mga relatives ng biktima ng Ampatuan Maguindanaw massacre noong na nangyari noong November twenty-three, two thousand nine. At salamat din sa ating kaibigan. Kasama po tayo sa unang nagresponde upang matulungan ang mga relatives na mabigyan ng serbisyong legal na mangyari ang Ampatuan massacre noong November twenty-three, two thousand nine. two thousand nine. Uh, para ho siguro sa kaalaman ng ating kapulungan, pwede ho bang malaman, Mr. Speaker, mula sa ating kinatawan ng Second District of Magindanao, ano na ho ba ang estado or, uh, status noong mga kasong isinampa sa pamilya ng Andalampatuhan at ang iba pang mga, uh, akusado dito sa madugong uh, massacre na ito, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. The update of the report last, uh, yung ito lang, November sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Ang korte po, yung sa sala ni Judge Reyes, ay, uh, meron na silang nadiniig na kaso na two hundred seventy-three witnesses. Ito yung hundreds, one hundred sixty-six prosecution witnesses at, uh, yung one hundred seven defense witnesses. At saka meron na pong narisolba ang korte na fifteen sets of formal offer of evidence and, uh, yung connection with the bail application ng seventy accused. At saka ngayon, Mr. Speaker, ang third ng defense to present its, uh, evidence in chief na out of one hundred eight accused were the subject of seven batches of prosecution ng formal, uh, offer of evidence ay, uh, narisol and the court sixty-nine accused of file their respective motion. Pero, Mr. Speaker, ang isang, uh, nakakabahala po dito ay yung sadyang pinapabagal po ng depensa ang kaso. Para papanginahan po ng loob ang mga testigo at ang pamilya ng biktima. Ang isa po nga, bakit ko po nasabi, Mr. Speaker, dahil noong unang panahon ang ginawa po ng defense ay, uh, nagsubmit po sila ng eight motion to refuse against Judge Jocelyn Solistreyas. And in fact, yung proceedings pa po ng kaso ay na-delay dahil yung court-assigned interpreter noon na si Rolando Abu ay nag-resign dahil sa pananakot po ng mga Andalampatuhan sa kanila, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat po, uh, Ginaw Speaker, at, uh, kinatawang Magundadato. Uh, ang sunod ko pong katanungan, noong, uh, maalala ko po noong madiklara nga ang ano mangyari ang incidenteng ito, uh, sa una-una hang pagkakataon ay nagkaroon ng declarasyon ng Marsalo, no, under the nineteen eighty-seven constitution sa Magindanao. At dahil nga dito, uh, nahuli rin ang, uh, mga salarin, no, mahigit isang daan ang mga akusado. Uh, pwede ho bang malaman sa kinatawang, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, sa Jid Magundadato, sa mahigit isang daang mga nahuling salarin, no, accused dito sa Andalampatuhan Magindanao massacre, ilan po ba talaga ang naiwan pa sa kulungan ngayon? At ilan pa doon sa mga akusado ang hanggang ngayon ay hindi pa rin nahuhuli, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker, etong sa murder cases na'to, na merong, uh, one hundred fifteen was already arrested. Yung latest lang na accused arrested was Jonathan Ingat noong February twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen. At, uh, may apat na po na accused including, uh, the former governor of Magindanao, Andalampatuhan Senior ay namatay na po, at, uh, may tatlo pa. Uh, tungkol naman po doon sa nabanggitang ating kagalang-galang na representante Congressman Sarate, yung maraming nahuli, yung massacre noong Marsalo, yun nga po napakadaming nahuling mga evidensya, wala yung mga baril and anything na magamit sa korte. Hanggang ngayon po, hinahanap na po natin dahil sabi nila nawala na yung ibang mga evidensya laban sa mga Andalampatuhan.
Salamat po. Uh, talagang nakakalungkot na Ginaw Speaker, no, na, uh, itong Andalampatuhan massacre na ito, ay ito ay naitala na hindi lang sa ating bansa, na kundi sa buong mundo. Uh, ang sinabi nga dito, this is emblematic of the state of impunity, no? Ito ang simbolo ng estado ng impunity sa ating bansa, hindi lang noong panahon na yon at, uh, kahit na hanggang ngayon, no? Dahil kahit ho sinabi at natura ng ating kaibigan, kanina, Mr. Speaker, na, uh, nagkaroon na ng disiplina, katahimika, na demokrasya sa Magindanao, alam naman po natin na tuloy-tuloy pa rin, no, ang usapin ng state of impunity, ang mga walang, uh, ang mga pagpatay na walang uh, hustisya, no? Uh, kaya nga po, uh, may tanong natin sa ating kaibigan, uh, kinatawang sa Jid Magundadato, ano ho ba sa tingin ninyo ang kailangan pang, ang pwede pang magawa ng kapulungan ito, no, ng House of Representatives para ang mga ganitong karumalduman at, uh, uh, hindi katanggap-tanggap na mga krimen ay mabigyan kaagad ng hustisya ang ating mga, uh, kababayan, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, ito po ang punto ko ngayon, kaya ako nagsasalita, unang-una, humingi po ako ng tulong sa aking mga kasamahan dito sa kongreso at pinarating na po natin sa ating mahal na pangulong Presidente Duterte, dahil alam ko po na meron tayong oversight function sa judiciary, na by next week, hopefully, na magfile po tayo ng resolution na para makanda ka ng investigasyon, para ipatawag natin yun sa sala ni Judge Jocelyn Solistreyas at saka iyanon natin sa Committee on Justice na para may imbestiga natin bakit ganito katagal ang nangyari sa Magindanao massacre at wala pa ring naatulan sa kanila, Mr. Speaker?
Salamat po, uh, Ginaw Speaker. Uh, tama po, talaga po nga, kailangang, uh, uh, maireview din natin, no, maripaso ang mga kasalukuyang batas, no, na sana ay, uh, magbibigay ng hustisya sa ating mga kababayan, pero ang nangyari po ay minsan ito pa ang naging dahilan, no? Uh, kung bakit, uh, hanggang ngayon ay isang mailap, mailap pa rin ang hustisya, lalong-lalo na sa mga biktima ng impunity katulad ng, uh, Andalampatuhan massacre. Sa katunayan, Ginaw Speaker, uh, noong pagkatapos mangyari ang Andalampatuhan massacre in two thousand nine, ay nagtayo kami ng alianza, uh, sa Mindanao, no, Alliance Against Impunity or AIM, dahil pagkatapos noong, uh, panahon na yon, ay tuloy-tuloy pa rin nga ang, uh, impunity. On the, uh, in fact, uh, ang nagkaroon kami ng tema noon, from Andalampatuhan to tampakan, the impunity continues. Bakit ho tampakan? Uh, several years after the, uh, Andalampatuhan massacre, ay meron ding minasaker na mga lumad sa tampakan, mga blaan, dahil lang sila ay tumutol sa pagpasok ng isang malaking pagmina, no, uh, pagkatapos noon, uh, naiba na naman ang mukha ng impunity, from Andalampatuhan to tampakan to arakan. Bakit ho arakan? Arakan is a town in North Cotabato, kung saan ho, in assassination, pinatay ang isang paring Italiano, si Father Pops Tentorio, dahil rin sa kanyang mga advokasiya, uh, laban sa pagmina, laban sa warlord disem, at laban sa mga paramilitary forces. Kaya ito po ang mukha ng impunity, no? Uh, tuloy-tuloy ang impunity at kailangang matugunan natin ito, no, ang, uh, klase ng sa sitwasyon, lalong-lalo na sa ating bayan na bumibiktima, lalong-lalo na ang mga inosyente at ang mga mahihirap. Kaya nga po, uh, Ginaw Speaker, at sana ay, uh, samahan din tayo ng ating kaibigan, no, na manawagan tayo halimbawa, uh, nakabibin pa rin sa ating, uh, kapulungan ito, ang isang panukalang batas para maproteksyonan ang ating mga witnesses, the Expanded Witness Protection Program. Dapat siguro pabilisin natin ito dahil sa nasabi na rin ng ating kaibigan kanina, merong mga testigo supposedly ang, uh, para sa, uh, prosecution ay pinatay sila, no, at hindi na nakapagtestify dahil they were not accommodated, uh, sa Witness Protection Program, no? Kaya siguro kung ito ay ating maipasa sa kapulungan ito, itong Expanded Witness Protection Program, may isang malaking tulong ito, no, para, uh, sa pagbigay ng hustisya sa ating mga kababayan. At, uh, bilang panghuli ko na lang po, no, na punto, uh, sinabi ko po kanina na itong, uh, state of impunity na ito ay hindi lamang usapin, no? Ang Andalampatuhan is an emblematic of the state of impunity not only in the Philippines, but even in the entire, uh, world, no? Uh, in, in fact, Mr. Speaker, in November twenty-three, two thousand eleven, two years after the, uh, Andalampatuhan massacre, the International Freedom of Expression Exchange or IFEX, no, in London, declared November twenty-three, two thousand eleven as an international day to end impunity. So ito po, uh, every year na ay ginogonita dahil sa nangyaring Andalampatuhan massacre sa buong mundo, ginogonita itong international day of to end impunity at, uh, uh, baka pwedeng magiging susog doon sa panukalang batas ng ating kaibigan sa Jid, uh, Magundadato, na sa halip na it, ay deklara ang November twenty-three, no, as an interna, as a national day of mourning, ay pwede nating ideklarang pambansang araw ito para itigil na ang impunity sa ating bansa. Maraming salamat po, uh, Ginaw Speaker, at muli ako'y nagpapaabot ng aking pakikipagisa. Ang bayan muna at ang buong kababayan block, sa aming pakikiisa, uh, sa ating kaibigan at sa lahat ng mga biktima ng Andalampatuhan massacre at biktima ng impunity. Salamat po at magandang hapon po sa ating lahat.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker, maraming salamat sa ating kaibigan, kagalang-galang na Congressman Carlos Sarate.
Majority Leader. I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Sajid Magundadato to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to acknowledge the presence of the guests of Honorable Sajid Magundadato, Governor Toto Magundadato, Mayor Freddy Magundadato, Ibrahim Jong Magundadato, Jerry Sanggikay, Mastura Boalan, Shamir Di Castro, May Salam Usop, Elizabeth Tayuan, Datun Tayuan, Ramla Kadalim, King Kadalim, Gina Lumawan, Paisa Lumawan, Jodelin Pandog, Attorney Nina Santos, Attorney Benito Dangzo, Donna Fuentes, Norodin Andal, and Sorib Bantas.
The guest of Congressman Magundadato is requested to rise, and we welcome you to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of Journal Number Three Thirty-seven dated November twenty-two thousand seventeen.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number Six Five One Seven, and for this purpose may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to the title of the bill. Six five one seven.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number Six Five One Seven.
House Bill Number Six Five One Seven, not providing compassionate and right of access to med, medical cannabis and expanding research into its medicinal properties.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that it is in the period of sponsorship and debate. I move that the author, Representative Rudito Albano, be recognized.
Representative Rudito Albano is hereby recognized. Ano to sponsorship? Eh, pa't sabi niya, ten man, eh?
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker. I'm ready for interpolation, Mr. Speaker. Okay, Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Jose Atienza Junior of the Partilis Bohai.
Congressman Jose Lito Atienza is hereby recognized.
Mr. Speaker, thank you for the, uh, opportunity to participate in this very important debate on the legalization of the so-called medicinal or medical marijuana. This is a very important, uh, piece of legislation that could affect lives of our people from all walks of life all over the archipelago. Kapag ito'y batas pambansahan na ating pinag-usapan, na maari makapagbago ng pamumuhay at kalagayan ng marami nating mga kababayan. Kaya dahil dito'y, bagamat, sabik na sabik akong magtanong at pa-kwestion ang mga ibat-ibang mga bahagi itong panukalang batas na ito, ay hindi po naman siguro makakamit ang kagustuhan na dito kung wala tayong sapat na bilang dito sa ating hapag. I am questioning the quorum therefore to make sure that we have enough members to listen to this very important discussion and to vote intelligently when the time comes.
Session suspended. Yung majority leader, uh, magiskap. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the Honorable Lito Atienza wishes to make a manifestation regarding his previous motion.
The distinguished representative Lito Atienza is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, we have stressed very, very clearly the need for a great majority of our membership to be participating in this all-important, critical piece of legislation, and that prompted me to request the leadership and to...
and to move for a call of the roll to make sure that there are enough members on the floor. But at this point in time, as requested by some members, they still would want to manifest certain important issues on the floor. I am momentarily withdrawing my motion.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we thank the gentleman from the Party List Buay. At this juncture, Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill 6517. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we begin consideration for approval on second reading. House Bill 6617 as contained in Committee Report 462, could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the House Bill? So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 669. 6617.
House Bill Number 6617, An Act Strengthening the Philippine Comprehensive Policy on Human Immunodeficiency Virus and Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome, Prevention, Treatment, Care and Support, and Establishing the Philippine National HIV and AIDS Plan, Appropriating Funds Therefore, Repealing for the Purpose Public Act Number 8504, Otherwise Known as the Philippine AIDS Prevention and Control Act of 1998.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, for her sponsorship of said measure, I move that we recognize the lady from Dinagat Island's Lone District, the Honorable Kakabagao. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Kakabagao is recognized.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker, at magandang araw po mga kasama ko sa kongreso. Mr. Speaker, ayon sa Joint United Nations Program on HIV/AIDS o UNAIDS, may 140% increase sa bilang ng bagong infection sa Pilipinas nitong nakaraang anim na taon. Mula sa humigit kumulang apat na libo tatlong daan, o 4,300, noong 2010, hanggang sa halos sampung libo't limang daan, o 10,500, nitong 2016. Ayon naman sa Department of Health, umabot sa isang record high ang buwanang bilang ng HIV-positive cases sa bansa mula noong 1984. Isang libo't siyamnapot walo, o 1,098 na bagong mga kaso nitong May 2017. Malinaw po na malala na ang sitwasyon. Malinaw rin po na hindi talaga natutugunan ng kasalukuyang mga pulisiya ang suliraning ito. Kaya naman, ay noon pa, ay ninanais na po naming maipasa ang Philippine HIV and AIDS Policy Act na papalit sa Republic Act Number 8504, o mas kilala bilang Philippine AIDS Prevention and Control Act of 1998. Halos dalawang dekada na po ang tanda ng batas na ito, ngunit paakyat ng paakyat pa rin ang bilang ng persons living with HIV o PLHIVs dito sa ating bansa. Now more than ever, we need to strengthen the country's legal framework in addressing this issue. We need better ways to educate our citizens and care for persons living with HIV. In this light, this proposed measure seeks to introduce the following reforms. Number one, the restructuring of the legal framework on HIV and AIDS by harmonizing it with evidence-informed strategies and approaches on prevention, testing, screening, treatment, care and support, and making the HIV response flexible and relevant to the characteristic of the HIV epidemic facing the country. Number two, the clarification of the roles and responsibilities of state institutions involved in the HIV and AIDS response, from government agencies to local governments, thus ensuring the effectiveness and efficiency of the structure governing the response. Number three, the establishment of the National Multisectoral HIV and AIDS Strategic Plan, thus creating a roadmap on HIV and AIDS that has clear strategies, targets, operationalization, framework, and funding. And number four, the strengthening of the information dissemination, education, and stigma reduction mechanism of the law which guarantees that the country's HIV and AIDS response is premised on the respect, recognition, and promotion of human rights and dignity. Malalim na po ang naging proseso ng konsultasyon at diskusyon kasama ang stakeholders at magiging mga tagapagpatupad ng panukalang batas na ito. Mula pa noong nakaraang mga kongreso, samasamang sumusporta dito ang Department of Health, ang Philippine National AIDS Council, at ang mga civil society organizations na kinabibilangan din ng mga persons living with HIV. Dahil sa tumataas na bilang ng HIV cases sa bansa, at dahil malinaw na kung ano dapat ang ating tugon dito, base sa mga talakayan natin sa kongreso mula noon pa, mahalagang kumilos na po tayo para maipasa ang mahalagang batas na ito sa lalong madaling panahon. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat mga kasama.
Majority Leader.
I move for suspension, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended. Session resumed.
Mr. Speaker, ah, there being no interpolations, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no amendments, individual or that pertaining to the committee, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 6617. So moved.
Those who are in favor of House Bill Number 6617, say aye. Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 6617 is approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker,
Majority Leader.
In accordance with the rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House Resolutions to the appropriate committees. House Resolution 1401 to the Committee on Trade and Industry, House Resolution 1404 to the Committee on Energy, House Resolution 1406 to the Committee on Trade and Industry, House Resolution 1409 to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, House Resolution 1417 to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, House Resolution 1420 to the Committee on Local Government, House Resolution 1426 to the Committee on Information and Communications Technology, House Resolution 1432 to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, House Resolution 1433 to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability, and House Resolution 1434 to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability. There is a correction, Mr. Speaker. House Resolution 1433 and 1434 is to be referred jointly with the Good Government and Public Accountability and banks and financial intermediaries.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn the session.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved to resume Wednesday, this November 22, 2017, at 4:00 PM.